It is Tuesday, December the 10th. My name is Susan Adams and on behalf of the Roanoke Park City Council, welcome you to our ceremonial meeting this evening. We'll begin by inviting you to stand with us for the land acknowledgement. The City of Roanoke Park acknowledges that indigenous peoples are the traditional stewards of the land. Let it be acknowledged that the City of Roanoke Park is located within the traditional homelands of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria comprised of Coast Miwok and Southern Pomo peoples. Thank you. I ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Sanborn?
Here.
Councilmember Elwood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Judichin?
Here.
Mayor Adams?
Here. Thank you very much. This microphone is very hot. Just note to the microphone guy. And back. We are really pleased tonight to have Jane Reynolds, a beautiful third grader who's homeschooled, to give us a pledge of allegiance tonight. Jane, come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I forgot what role to acknowledge our speaker. So we look as grateful as ever this night at City Manager or City Attorney. Our City Attorney, Michelle Kenyon. So thank you very much. Next on the agenda, it says presentations. Do we have any presentations tonight?
No, Mayor. We don't have presentations.
Okay, thank you. And no department head briefings?
No, Mayor.
All right. We're going to go right into public comments. And we'll begin in this order. So I'll call three of you. And then if three of you want to come up, and then when it's the next group's turn, we'll call the next three up. Okay? So first is Tracy Franco, Bill and Lisa Johnson, and Linda Tillman. Welcome, Tracy. You're up. Yep. Thank you for coming.
Okay, does red light? Hello? Is this working?
Yes.
Hi there. I'm here to talk about the flooding that occurred again on Hartwood Drive on Friday, November 22nd. I'll be giving each council member some photos of the flooding events from December 2005, which was a full flooding of Hartwood; December 2014, a partial flooding of Hartwood; January 2017, no flooding but the big field spilling over into Snyder; January 2023, full flooding of Hartwood; and then pictures from this last event, November 22nd, full flooding of Hartwood. There have been two satellite meetings regarding this flooding, and nothing has been done to come up with a solution. The floods keep happening. I emailed the Director of Public Works on 11/20, two days before this last event, voicing concerns that the field on Snyder Lane is getting close to overflowing. I was told that there is staff patrolling the area and that the prep work has been done on this slide gate drain that was installed. A second email later that day said the slide gate drain does work when properly set. I emailed on the day of the flooding, right before the water started coming down Hartwood, and got a response of, "We are keeping a close eye on this." So we, as a neighborhood, want solutions. Monitoring is not a solution. Patrolling isn't a solution. Placing flooded signs isn't a solution. And properly said or not, that slide gate drain does not seem to be a solution. We want to know what plan the city has for the next time this happens. In the past, the city utilized a pump to divert water, and that was a solution. Building the barricade with sandbags along the bike lane on Snyder, that was a solution. The water in my front yard was highest at around 115 and receded by about four feet by 240, an hour and a half before the high tide ended, thanks to that sandbag wall. I have seen a city pump that is parked on Martin Avenue with the words "Suction and Discharge." Maybe that could be a solution. At the height of the storm, there were only nine sandbags available at the community center. That's not being prepared. I called Mayor Adams to get more sandbags, and soon a satellite sandbag station was set up in our neighborhood. We were pleased that the city did that. Thank you to Mayor Adams, who brought five missionaries from her church to help fill sandbags. And thank you to Councilmember Elwood for also helping that day. We were hoping that the sandbag wall along Snyder Lane would stay in place to be proactive for when the next storm comes. It was upsetting to see it taken down on Sunday, two days after the flooding. On a clear and sunny day, there were four city trucks with four city employees to take down the wall. Where was all that help during the flooding? Thank you.
Bill and Lisa Johnson, let's give Tracy a minute to pass out her things. No, you're fine. And I know you can see the clock. It's three minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. And I wanted to thank Tracy for going to all the work that she's done for us, you know, chronicling what's been going on in our neighborhood. So I've lived there for 25 years, and during that time, we've had four floods, like she said. And so we're all getting kind of more paranoid because as these storms become stronger and happen more frequently, that we're worried, you know, that our houses are going to flood again. And so I just hope that maybe something permanent can be done to, you know, alleviate this situation and to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. While Linda Tillman's coming up, next is Debbie Benson Miller, Barbara McKenzie, and Steve Keith. Hi, Linda. How are you?
Fine, thanks. How are you?
Good. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I wanted to tell you that I live at 1211 Hermitage Way, just two doors down from Tracy. And within 15 minutes of trying to get across Roanoke Park to get home, the water was up to my knees. I had to park my car on Eleanor, walk across the churches, climb over the fence to water to my knees in order to get home to my dog. We had no city people out there. There weren't any trucks available to bring people into their homes. Children were coming in the back of Tracy's son's pickup truck so that we could get them into the house. No city people were there. And this is pretty alarming considering we live with a lot of retired, older people. I'm almost 70 years old, and I am tracing through the water, hoping not to fall off the curb and break my leg. Thankfully, there was a man there that had me hold on to his backpack and helped me across the street. We were out there with no help from the city. We're paying city taxes. We own our homes. This is what we have to live with. Now, my main concern is if the insurance companies find out that we could possibly be in a flood zone from here on out, we're going to be paying a lot of money for flood So please try to find a solution. I'm asking if there could possibly be an outside engineer that can come in and take a look at the problem, and maybe we can figure out what we can do to make it this permanent. Because it's going to be a problem ongoing with the weather and the amount of water we're getting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Linda. All right. Debbie Benson Miller, Barbara McKenzie, and Steve Keith. Hi, Debbie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I live at 1223 Hermitage Way in Roanoke Park, and my daughter had come to visit me that day. She was taking my husband to the doctor, and within 15 minutes, she said, "You better get your car out of here." I went to get my car out of there. Within 15 minutes, I couldn't drive it, and I had to put it back into the garage and just hope for the best. Our homes were built in 1999. They're some of the newer homes before we got the latest ones in Roanoke Park. We have had an issue with flooding in this year and other years. We receive large amounts of rain. The field across the way pours into our subdivision like a river. And it fills everything, and everything backs up. Our subdivision is 36 homes. It's either 36 or 38 homes. That's a lot of homes to try and get sandbags for. If there's a possibility, we could do something to divert it before it gets there. In 2005, we had almost $10,000 worth of damage in my home alone. That was just because it came 10 inches into my garage, and it knocked out all of our heating ducts, which it did probably most everyone down Hartwood. Not to mention the pool and yard damage that we didn't even add up. But many of my neighbors had the same damage at their properties. We have met with city representatives outside of this meeting. The reason we're here is because it's official, and we just want to bring it to your attention that we need some help in our area. We would like to have something, a plan, a diversion, an option to pump, or some other option instead of 38, 36 homes panicking, trying to get sandbags at the last minute because all of a sudden it just took that 15 minutes, and now it's flooding. We've been told things such as, "The pipes were too small when they built there." Okay, so do we fix them, or can we do something else? And we've, like I said, we've had meetings outside, but we need help, and we would like to. These homes can be, they're worth over $900,000. And, you know, we put our heart and soul into them, and we just want them to last for us, and we can live our lives there without having to worry about flooding. So we would please ask you to take on this project and see what we can do to divert it from future floods.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Barbara.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, and City Manager and City Attorney. Barbara McKenzie, 45-year resident of G Section. I wanted to thank you for the honor of being your library commissioner, representing you on the Sonoma County Library Commission. It's a great honor, and continue to enjoy the work involved doing that. I wanted to let you know that I just was elected Chair of the Finance Committee of the Commission, and so I'll be putting my eagle eye on our money and watching our resources carefully. I wanted to thank you, the Mayor, Susan, for your service on the Library Advisory Board this year and in prior years. You've been a great supporter of the library. I really appreciate it. Thank you to all the council members, because I know you're all library supporters, and really appreciate all that you do to support the library. I wanted to let you know that right now, our library is the busiest library in the whole system because Petaluma's closed, Healdsburg's closed. They're both getting major remodels. We have some of the Petaluma staff in our library, working in our library in the conference room, so conference room's closed. We're getting tons of donations from the Friends that normally be made to the Friends down in Petaluma. And so our library's book sales and bookstore are really impacted. So anyway, we're really busy there, and sometimes we, some months, we are the busiest library in the entire system right now. So I wanted to let you know that. And I also want to put on my citizen hat, and as a supporter of Yes on Measure W, I wanted to thank the Council, in particular, the Vice Mayor, for the use of his facility for Yes on Measure W kickoff campaign that we had there, and the Mayor for her help getting signs, locations, so we could support the library tax measure renewal. And by a squeaking few votes, we did pass it. We were required to get two-thirds vote. It did pass. And so we're so grateful to all the voters, everybody who supported the library. We now have secure financing for our library system, so for now and in the future. So thank you all. Appreciate all your support of the library, and I just wanted to wish you well in the coming year. Thank you, Mayor, for all you've done, and to the incoming Mayor and Vice Mayor, wish you well, and the Council, too. Have a good year. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Mr. Keith, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, staff. I wanted to take the opportunity, I knew we were going to have a full house, to put a plug in for some great, this time of year, gift opportunities. There's one really close to City Hall that you can walk to during your lunch. It's a Sweet Pea gift shop there inside the senior center. It's filled with items that are handmade by area seniors, and it benefits area seniors as well. If you're feeling particularly frisky and want to walk a little bit further from here, I suggest the best bookstore in Roanoke Park. Not to say it's actually the only bookstore in Roanoke Park, but it's the best one regardless of that, and that's the Friends of the Library Bookstore. Thank you. I've made a habit to go to Friends of the Library bookstores in every town that I visit, and my experience thus far, the Roanoke Park one is far and away the best organized, the largest. And the fact that they, just having seen the back room, there are so many books. The bookstore, even the book sales that they do typically twice a year are probably the best organized as well that I've seen, and I've gone to those throughout the state. Also, my last minute or half or so, I'd like to encourage everyone here to engage in active transportation. That's walking, rolling, biking. We have quite an array of multi-use paths throughout the city that connect parks and shopping. It's proven to lift one's mood. It takes a few cars off the road, and there's more projects coming down the line that's going to make that experience even safer and more enjoyable. So, thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Danny Huckel, Deborah Greenblatt, and Jake McKenzie. Welcome, Danny.
Good evening, folks. Also a resident of Hartwood Drive and experienced all the other times that have been mentioned here. We've been flooded like four times. The flood before last, we actually lost our daughter's car and had to replace it. We got about 25 cents on the dollar from the insurance company, so that was quite expensive. But I wanted to make one special note. We live at 1234 Hartwood, 1234, and the street comes down to our house, and we have five drains in front of our house. I have a security camera that I have running all the time, and I noticed the flooding starting. And how I notice it starting is the water comes up the drains instead of drain going down the drains. So with water coming up the drains and the water coming down the street from the fields across Snyder, this turnaround, it took about 50 minutes for it to get up to an impassable stage. So it happens really quick. And fortunately, this time, it was there in the daytime, but it's happened before during the night, and you're completely unaware of what's going on until you wake up and see all the flooding everywhere. The first flood that was mentioned, we got flood under our house. FEMA helped us out, but we still had quite a bit of damage and had to get rid of a lot of things. But I think, you know, I agree with everybody else. Everybody else brought up the points. Something, you know, needs to be done, and there's got to be some solution somewhere. And we just seemed so exposed. All we could do was, you know, sit in our garage and watch the water come up. You can't do anything except, you know, we cleared out all, you know, I have a music room, and I cleared out all of our instruments and everything, and just in case. And it's just getting a little old, and it's insecure, and, you know, we just don't, you know, like everybody else mentioned, we don't know how much we're going to get covered in the future. Climate change is getting worse, and it's going to continue to get worse. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you for listening very much. Appreciate it.
Danny, thank you for joining us. Deborah Greenblatt, Jake McKenzie, and then Lisa Orloff.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and other Roanoke Park staff here. I've lived in Roanoke Park in W Section for a little over four years, and I'm proud to call Roanoke Park my home. Susan, congratulations on your past year's serving as Mayor of our great city. I find your love for Roanoke Park infectious, and that's probably what inspires me to try to be a better citizen, involved in what goes on in our city, and attend many of the Roanoke Park events. During the time that I've known you, I think I've learned something about Roanoke Park in every conversation that we've had. I appreciate the pride you have in serving with your fellow council members and working with Roanoke Park city staff to get things done. Thinking back to your 2022 campaign flyer, "The 25 Ways of Making Roanoke Park a Better Place to Live," that goes way beyond the number. It is multiplied many times over by the things that cannot be counted or measured. Your individual encounters day after day with those you meet touch people in different ways. To use one of my 96-year-old father's favorite phrases for complimenting another human, Susan, you are the real deal. Thank you for all you have done for the City of Roanoke Park, and thank you for all you will do in the future.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, Deborah. Follow that, Jake.
Well, he will. Well, Madam Mayor, I'm going to stand up to say is that I am not going to follow that because I asked to make public comments under Agenda Item 8A.
Uh-oh.
That is your reorganization section. So on a point of order, Madam Mayor, I would request to be called at that point in time when I will have things to say about you.
Now that you're up there, go right ahead.
But since I have the microphone, I would just make a technical comment. The City of Roanoke Park is in Flood Control Zone 1A. The responsibilities of the Sonoma Water, formerly known as Sonoma County Water Agency, include flood protection, and we happen to be in 1A. So all I would say through you and to the City Manager, seems like it would be a good time to possibly have a community meeting with representatives from Sonoma Water and with your Public Works people. That's a thought that occurred to me because I remember going out to flooding in this community when I was sitting where you are, and I think it's time for action.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Orloff, and then Herman Hernandez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff. I too was going to comment about your performance, but instead of like Jake, I'll just say my thoughts now. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for all you've done this past year as our chamber, I should say, as our chamber, as our city. Lisa Orloff, so I'm the CEO of the Roanoke Park Chamber of Commerce and also a resident of Roanoke Park 4945 Fern Place. Should have said that first. As the Mayor, Susan, you've been very supportive. You've been at every ribbon cutting, several of our luncheons and our breakfasts and our mixers. It's always great, especially at the ribbon cuttings and the mixers, for those local business owners to have you and the other council members there. They always appreciate having that attention and being heard. And on that note, the city has done a great job on spotlighting local businesses, so we really appreciate that. So I just want to say thank you for your service and all you've done for Roanoke Park, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that. Mr. Hernandez, welcome to Roanoke Park.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, as the Mayor said, I am not from Roanoke Park except for Sunday mornings when I go to Chila Killers because that place is absolutely incredible. I don't know what they do, but it's amazing, and it's always packed. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members, City Manager Piedra. It's an honor to be here today. I came here for the party, but since I saw that there was public comment, I just wanted to say thank you very much to the whole City Council and the City of Roanoke Park for presenting the Hispanic Latinx proclamation way back in September. I know it's been a couple months, but our organization, Los Cien Sonoma County, was incredibly grateful, and you did it at one of our biggest events, and we just can't thank you enough. And I also wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you for this city, you, the council members, being the first five, not of Sonoma County, not the nonprofit, but
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, as the mayor said, I am not from Rona Park except for Sunday mornings when I go to Chila Killers because that place is absolutely incredible. I don't know what they do, but it's amazing and it's always packed. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city manager, Piedra. It's an honor to be here today. I came here for the party, but since I saw that there was public comment, I just wanted to say thank you very much to the whole city council in the city of Rona Park for presenting the Hispanic Latinx proclamation way back in September. I know it's been a couple months, but our organization, Los Cien Sonoma County, was incredibly grateful, and you did it at one of our biggest events, and we just can't thank you enough. And I also wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you for this city, you, the council members, being the first five, not of Sonoma County, not the nonprofit, but being the first five city council members and council of Sonoma County to sign on to the solidarity letter. Given this new administration that's coming in in less than six weeks, we have a responsibility of protecting our community immigrants, our immigrant families, our immigrant students, and y'all really impressed me. I never doubted you, but you guys, there was no questions asked. You were there and you signed it, and we really, really appreciate it. And we're going to need all of our leaders to stand up strong, and all of our community members as well, because we're not just talking about our immigrant community who is supporting our ag industry. We're talking about the ag industry, we're talking about the construction workers, we're talking about our teachers, we're talking about people that literally are more educated than people I've ever met. They have two masters, they have doctors, but they're still on DACA. You talk about mass deportations, and everybody is concerned and very worried. And I'm sure you've been hearing from your constituents that these are real concerns, and these are things that we can do. Our community leaders can do small things, but I think one of them was to step up front and sign on to that letter. And then whatever you can do to support your students, because the last thing, especially in mixed families, we know we have a large Latino and English learning community here in Sonoma County, but you start to separate the parents, what's going to happen to the students who live here and they were born here? We have a big, big challenge ahead of us, but I just want to say thank you very much and congratulations to you, Madam Mayor, and I look forward to the party. Peace out.
Thank you very much. There's no other public comments. At this point in the meeting, we'll go on to Item 7, Consent Calendar. All items are considered together unless there's a public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to make a motion or pull an item for discussion?
A motion.
We have a first by Rodriguez and a second by.
I second.
Alward, thank you very much.
The following vote is for the adoption of the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes by 5-0.
Thank you very much. All right, now we are going to go to Item 8A, and I think we have two, we have one public comment for 8A, Mr. Jake McKenzie.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Incoming Mayor, Mr. Incoming Vice Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, people assembled, ready to party, I would gather. But before you get to party, the business of the council has to be done. It was Dick Spotswood from Marin who is reputed to have written, "The best job in politics is to be mayor of your hometown." Well, I can't think of a person who fits that definition better than Susan Hollingsworth Adams. I believe, in fact, that you arrived here before it was Rona Park, before the citizens in 1962 voted. It was a real squeaker as to what the city was going to be named, but I think it was like 352 votes to 210 or something like that, they decided this would be Rona Park. The Hollingsworth family was here, and so Susan Hollingsworth Adams, you have in fact met that great paradigm of politics, becoming the mayor of truly your hometown. So I would just like to stand here as someone who's sat there and say, "Job well done." Now, the incoming mayor, he knows this gig already. He does a few gigs himself, but he did a good job with his first time at the mayor gig. Like myself, this is not his hometown in the sense that the outgoing mayor is. He comes from back east, and I came from Scotland, but it is our hometown. It's all of our hometowns. The vice mayor, I already advised this evening that this was going to be a great learning opportunity, working with the incoming mayor, and she agreed with me, so I'm glad to see she's nodding her heads. She's still agreeing with me. So I look forward to 2025 under the leadership. This council has worked hard. The city manager has worked hard. The city attorney has always worked hard as long as I've known her, which is now becoming quite a long time. But the real reason for me standing up here tonight is to say that 2025 may not be an easy year politically for us nationally, but we're in good hands here in the city of Rona Park. So, well done, Madam Mayor, and my time evidently is up.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, so for the remainder of the meeting is the celebratory part. I'd like to thank you all for joining us this evening, leaving your homes. It's a little chilly outside tonight, but it feels very warm in here. This is the order. City Clerk Lopez Cuevas will certify the election and administer the oath of office, and then there'll be some presentations. So we'll go ahead and turn the meeting over to the city clerk.
Please ask Councilmember Rodriguez, Councilmember Jackie Alward, and Vice Mayor Judy Chee
Thank you. I, Sylvia Lopez Cuevas, City Clerk for the city of Rona Park, certified that the city council of the city of Rona Park adopted Resolution Number 2024-035 on June 11, 2024, canceling its general municipal election scheduled for the 5th of November of 2024 pursuant to the California Elections Code. Samantha Rodriguez was appointed as if elected to the Office of Councilmember for District 1 for a full term of four years. Gerard Judy Chee was appointed as if elected to the Office of Councilmember for District 3 for a full term of four years. Jackie Alward was appointed as if elected to the Office of Councilmember for District 4 for a full term of four years. Okay. I'll go ahead and administer the oath of office to all of you. Please raise your right hand. The execution of this oath is required by Article 20, Section 3 of the Constitution of the State of California for the Office of City Council. Do you, Samantha Rodriguez, Gerard Judy Chee, and Jackie Alward swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Now I'm going to have you sign your oath right here.
So now we'll turn the time over to City Manager Piedra for presentation to Mayor Adams on behalf of the city.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members, members of the public. Really want to thank all of you for being here and, of course, our mayor for a great year. I know there was so many valuable, you know, just events and different activities that our city has done throughout this year. Obviously, we wouldn't be able to do this without the support of our community, our employees, obviously our directors, and all the members of the community. And of course, we appreciate your leadership. And when I reflect back and I think about, you know, how to define your year, clearly I can think of three words, and those are engagement and responsiveness, as you probably were able to determine that based on the comments that you received this evening. Clearly, you were a very engaged member of the community and obviously serving us and representing us well as our mayor. And then finally, just caring, as was pointed out by Mr. McKenzie, is you have been in part of that community for a very long time, and you truly, truly care about the needs of our community. And so we thank you for a great year, and it gives me great honor to be able to present you with this book of memories. And what I find is, as you're going to go through it, you're going to see a lot of smiling faces, and you'll see a reflection of members of this community, our residents, our businesses, visitors. And it truly is a nice time when you are able to go back and look at this memory book and just see the various memories. Of course, we couldn't capture everything that has happened, but we tried to definitely highlight what happened during your mayorship in 2024. So thank you for your service, and thank you for serving as our mayor of 2024. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I could not have said it better myself, you know? You can continually work at this job, and you can work as many hours as you want, right? You can work 10 hours, 20 hours, 30 hours, and you just gave it all. You herded the cats very well. You have some great accomplishments this year, and we'll get into that after we see the video. But we are very grateful, on behalf of the council, to present you with some flowers.
Thank you very much.
And a card and a gift certificate for you to enjoy at one of your favorite restaurants.
Thank you very much.
Oh, no, it gets better. There's more. And this beautiful, oh, the bag. Oh, it's a Schwag bag. It's a Rona Park Schwag bag. And then the prize, of course. This will go well on your mantle, and it was well earned, and it was about time, and we were so happy when you became the mayor. And so congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jamar. Good job. Thank you. Okay. So I think there's a video?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mayor. And first, as I start off with the presentation of our year-end video, you know, I want to say that, yes, we are capturing many moments in our community and obviously work that our staff has done, obviously under your leadership and support. But as, you know, we all see this year-end video, I want you to focus on what it is that we do. And as a community, as a city, we're here to serve members of the public. You know, as obviously was pointed out today, given the public comments that we receive, our work is never done, and there's always work to do. And what gives me great joy is that we really have an engaged community. And when I say that, I mean that we have an engaged workforce. I mean, I have seen our employees be so caring and really responsive to the needs of our community. I have seen the support from the different types of organizations that we have in this community, everything from the chamber, from our local nonprofits, because we don't do and we don't deliver these services on our own. And so we depend on our community really to create community. So it gives us great joy to be able to present this video. I thank Kevin and all of the 200-plus employees that really make this community happen. And so as you see this, you're going to see a lot of the, just the impact that we have and what we do for our community. So I hope that you enjoy this year-end video that just highlights, and again, just highlights obviously certain things that we have done, because there's a lot that we do. But I thank you, all the council, for your support in 2024, and obviously look forward to the new mayor and vice mayor coming in. It's going to be a great year. And yes, there's a lot of challenges ahead, but we definitely have the right team to be able to tackle that. So thank you. Please, if our city clerk can play the video. Thank you.[1626.61]
That was excellent. Thank you very much to your team for putting that together. Okay, so the next part is, all commissioners, I mean, all council members have an opportunity to reflect on 2024. So, we'll start with Vice Mayor in waiting, Emily Sanborn.
They're not our vice mayor yet.
Come along this way.
You know, in reflecting, I actually tend to look forward to, because we've gotten a lot done. We have a lot of projects midway. It's really exciting to think about continuing forward with this team. I'm very grateful to work with each and every one of you. We have an incredible staff. And today, I got the pleasure of going and visiting one of the local elementary schools and speaking with some of our youngest residents. And it was just really inspiring what they wanted to know about public office and about what we do and how we do it. And I just, it hit home for me, you know, who we are serving. I encouraged all of them to run for office, just in, you know, eight, nine short years. They have the opportunity to be up here. And it's just really been an honor to be able to be a part of so many achievements this year. And I just thank you all.
I think the video is pretty clear. I mean, when you see over 400 pet licenses, that's one a day, right, that is being processed. And that's just pet licenses. That's not all the other permits, over 1,000 of them, just in this past year. So, I have to agree in kind of reflecting, you see how much work we've done, and that I know many of us have much more that we want to get done. And so, it really, it really goes out to the staff. We have the political will. I think we've shown that in the last two, two and a half years. And the staff really meet us there and kind of come up to the challenge in such a graceful way to the benefit of our residents. And so, you know, we're not perfect, but we're, I think we're pretty close to it, given the circumstances. And I'm just excited to see how much more we streamline and implement and seeing our resource hub open and just more and more, more to come. So.
Well, pictures speak for itself. The work speaks for itself. I am just so proud to be in this council, because we are the best council that you can ever dream of. Not only we work so well, agree to disagree, we have put our own pride aside, but focus on the service that the people of Rona Park voted us to do here. We have done so much, and there's much to come. Our city, when we travel around, we go to Sacramento, wherever we go, I was in Florida. The city of Rona Park was in the mouth of a lot of elected officials, because they are looking how we are working and how we're improving, not only the quality of life of people of Rona Park, but we are also inspiring other cities to do what we do. And sometimes, they think we're faking it, but we are not. We are the real deal. And so, under your leadership, we have accomplished so much. And I am so proud that I was able to work with you, and we continue to work. And also, this is what teamwork and unity look like. Unity, teamwork brings the work. And I have so much to say, but I cannot, like, I cannot express how I feel, but thank you for your leadership this year. And I know that people have seen what you're capable of doing and what we will continue to do together. I am so grateful to have you and the rest of the team as teammates. So, we are continued to make great damage in a positive way for our citizens and along with our, our staff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Susan, I remember a couple of years ago, when we first, you were first nominated to be the vice mayor, and you shed a little bit of a tear. And you said, "If I would have known I was going to be nominated for vice mayor, I would have invited my parents." And that's really all I needed to know, in terms of the pride and how you approached the job. Two years later, you've done a magnificent job, and we're very grateful to our staff and our team and all of you. We've all shown each other or helped each other have the wisdom to do the right thing. More importantly, we've, we've shown our character with each other, going about it in the right way. And finally, getting it done, effectiveness, you mentioned, political will. And that's a great gift. And I'm very proud to be part of this body. I'm very proud to be your vice mayor. And just congratulations on a great year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last year, when I became the mayor, I listed five goals that I wanted to work on and work towards on the council. One was to secure a contract with a developer and be prepared on our way to breaking ground for our downtown. But we've chosen a developer. And just a quick little history lesson, in 2022, we purchased a property. That's the first time Rona Park's owned it. Now, we become the, in charge of our own destiny. In 2023, we did the RFQ. In 2024, we entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement. I think that Gerard Judichay, as the mayor, will sign a development agreement. And then sometime after that, we'll break ground on the downtown. So, we're moving forward on that very quickly. The second one is, a goal was to improve communications with our residents, making it easier for them to access services and events. That's one where I think we can probably improve a little bit. I know we've got somebody coming online here pretty soon who's going to be doing that, a communication job for us. It's interesting, sometimes I'll, I'll be talking to people, running into them in the grocery store, "Have you heard this is going on tomorrow? What are you talking about?" So, there's, the water isn't always getting down to the end of the road. I think we can work on that a little better. The next thing was to finish updating the general plan. We're very close. We're very close. We had some delays that were not caused by anything having to do with the city, and we're working through those. And I think probably in the first half of next year, the general plan will be finished. And then, the last two were improved services for the unhoused and by opening a social services hub modeled after Peddle with People Services Center. And you saw, we had a ribbon cutting for that. That, to me, was a highlight of being the mayor. Once we were able to close down Roberts Lake Road, the park and ride of all those tents, and now have Le Bath Landing, and now we've got Peddle with People Services working right here in Rona Park for Rona Park People Services, I think we're on the way to taking care of that problem in a way that I'm very proud to represent. I just want to close by thanking the Chamber of Commerce for being a great partner for the city. I know Saturday night, when we were turning on the lights, I thanked the community service people for all the great work they did on that project. But it's the Chamber of Commerce project who did all that with backup from the community services. And we have a great partner in the Chamber of Commerce, and I want to thank Lisa for that. And also, the library. The library is a great partner for us. It's all happening at the library. It is not your, you know, remember that old commercial, "It's not your father's automobile. This is not your father's library." I mean, you can rent a toolkit for Crain Out Loud, or check out a toolkit. That's just crazy. So, I've had a wonderful, absolutely wonderful time being the mayor. I look forward to handing Gerard the gavel and taking my seat down there somewhere. And thank Marcella for her excellent leadership and for our city attorney. We are so well represented here. I'm very proud to work with them. I thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll take, we'll let Jackie, we'll let Councilmember Elward take the first position, please. And then Mayor Emeritus Adams take the second position. And we'll have Samantha, excuse me, Councilmember Rodriguez, next to me, please. And Emily, you know where you go.
My name is on it.
Thank you. You got everything? So, I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank the staff. And please join us. Right after this, we're going to have some refreshments in the lobby and get an opportunity to chat. I'm just so grateful to be here. The last time I was here, I think I was in my sweatpants on Zoom when we took the oath from home. So, having this real and in person is wonderful. And I'd like to just have the council members have an opportunity to talk about vision for the upcoming year, and then we'll adjourn this meeting. So, turn to Councilmember Elward. Would you like to start us off, please?
Welcome to the first seat.
Oh, I've been in a seat before.
Yes, you have.
Well, my goal for 2025, it's, it's, it's the same, continue the work that we have started. I know that everybody's looking into one project and one project only. It's to develop our downtown. And for me, I just want that to be, I want the groundbreaking to start. I want things to keep moving. And also, to continue just listening to our citizens and giving them the best, and also provide the need that we are, we have been doing. So, and also, the one thing that I'm going to ask, to continue to be united, because the unity, it's what makes our force. Once we lose that, we lose everything.
Thank you. I was, got a lot of phone calls last week during all that flooding that was going on. And I want, and I know they've left, but I want the people who came here tonight to tell us what their concerns were, that we appreciate that. It's not easy to come and talk to a roomful of strangers and tell them something that's on your mind. But I want to assure you all that we have in our city manager, a woman who sets aside everything that happened that day and says, "Let's find a solution to this problem so it stops happening." To me, that's a vision and a leadership for Rona Park, and I'm really grateful that we have that kind of a manager here. I just have a couple of things that I'd like us to consider as a group. We have really great code enforcement. I think I heard there's over 10,000 users of our GoRequest app. That's a lot. I don't know how they keep up with it. But what happens is, our, our code enforcement people are mainly responding to problems. And sometimes, I wonder if, when they're going to Jackie's house to respond to the problem at her house, if they drive past my house and see a problem. And because it hasn't been reported, right, we're not necessarily taking action. So, I'd like to encourage our code enforcement department and to maybe kind of be a little more proactive, not just reactive. And then the other thing, too, is, there's some things going on in town now and again in the evenings. I think we need some code enforcement at least one weekend night and one or two nights during the week, to just kind of drive around or be on call to say, "Hey, this, this shouldn't be happening." They're out on Friday and Saturday nights, and then they're gone. And people, I get calls on those nights. I get pictures of things. And so, we need to address the problems when they happen. Our team is a fantastic team. I've, I've never suggested any solution to any problem that hasn't been given a serious look. And I really appreciate that. And I appreciate the team that we have, from the city manager all the, all the way down to the people who make sure our city is kept clean. I appreciate all their work, and I, I've joined Jackie in saying, "I appreciate the unity that we have on this council. We're very fortunate." I think we all know that, and I don't see anything taking that away from us. So, thank you very much. Congratulations, Gerard. I think you'll do great.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll dive right in. Some of my goals that I look forward to continuing, really, into this next year is, what I believe most importantly, is the city's infrastructure. As we heard earlier today, it's great that we're having a new downtown. I'm excited for our new downtown. But will, will it serve us if we can't have, you know, nicely paved roads and good street lighting to get folks to come to our downtown? So, it's, they can be parallel, right? I also want to continue focusing and helping support the community trust and transparency that Chief Matos has worked on with his team at the Public Safety Department. And a little plug, tomorrow night, they're, the Rona Park Public Safety Officers Association is doing their annual toy drive. Tomorrow, they'll be in District One. They've been to a couple other neighborhoods. And so, if you check them out on Facebook, you'll see where they get to go visit. And so, you can donate an unwrapped toy to them. And just the work that they've done with our community and the community roundtable that they had in place as well. I think folks have heard me over the meetings and over the last couple of years of my focus towards youth and our transitional age youth. So, making sure that we are also supporting our community services as they continue to provide great events that are for, you know, youth and keep them included as well as the families. But how we can continue to do that and work with our partners over at Sonoma State University, hi Mario, and Cotati Rona Park Unified School District. We don't tell them how to run their schools, but how can we partner when their faculty and our students are residents here as well. And I think in overall, it's just maintaining this continued sense, as Councilmember Elward said, of unity, not just a sense, but that we really, I, I think that we really walk the walk and talk the talk in the unity of us five here. We do not always agree, believe it or not, but the fact that we're unified in holding respect and space for one another and to hear one another, I think is what makes us so successful on top of that. So, I just, I look forward to continuing that and, and our complete streets happening soon.
Mayor?
What they said. It's going to be a big adjustment, sitting in the seat. You know, I think what we have been doing is phenomenal. I'm going to say the same things that you said, in that we are a fabulously cohesive unit, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate being a part of a very effective team. And it, we just get so much done, you know, between the council and the staff and leadership here. So, this year, my, my personal goal is to delve deeper into leadership within the leadership team here. And like Samantha said, I think keeping up with our existing infrastructure in addition to the downtown. The new shiny is nice, but we all know the value of maintenance. So, looking forward to just putting as much energy as we can into keeping things well cared for. Yeah, and just looking forward to working with you. Gerard, congratulations on your second mayorship.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, council members. Obviously, the elephant in the room is the downtown, but really, it all begins with financial integrity. In Rona Park, we have a balanced budget, and we have had one for quite some time. All of our reserves are fully funded, and our unfunded contingent liabilities are under control. So, when we want to go and do things, we have to make sure that we have that financial foundation beneath us to help us do it. We're very excited, obviously, as I mentioned, for the downtown, but also, our approach on homelessness has been unique in the region. And it first started with the closing of the Roberts Lake encampment and the opening of our temporary supportive services location over at Le Bath Landing, which has been a tremendous success. Part, we did that under Jackie, and then under Susan. Now, we, we have the Rona Park People Services next to the senior center. So, now, that's an upstream investment on preventing homelessness. Finally, the council last meeting directed staff to take a look at Project Home Key Plus, right? And this is permanent supportive housing. And we're looking at a couple of sites. housing. And we're looking at a couple of sites in town, and that will be the trifecta, right? Now we'll have the continuum, if you will, of care. We'll have, be able to tell people, look, you can't be here, but wouldn't you rather be over here where there's heat and, and food and, and security and safety? And we can tell our residents for the first time that if you are food insecure or you need assistance, you can go here. And then finally, the ultimate solution when they graduate from Le Bath Landing to permanent supportive housing. So that's wonderful. And yes, we do have the political will to do all of that. And, and it's because we work well together. And, and I know from the outside perspective, and I've said this before at, at parties and stuff, that sometimes politics looks like two people in a phone booth having a knife fight, but it doesn't have to be that way. And so I'm very proud that it's not that way here. If we talk about economic development and the great job that our senior analysts, Kevin King and Marcella are doing, to not only attract businesses, but to keep businesses and continuing our efforts to interview, do needs assessments to these businesses. We go and we visit them, and we ask, how are you doing? What are you doing? What are your plans? How can we help you? You know, Kevin has done an incredible job. Take a look at the theater, and we were scratching our head as to what was going to happen with the theater. Well, now we're going to get 32 courts of pickleball and a whole entertainment center over there. Then we were shaking our heads, saying, well, what are we going to do about Burlington Coat Factory? Well, we've got a bigger and better store coming in at Burlington Coat Factory that'll be opening in a couple of weeks. So we're focused on economic development, and I want to keep us focused on economic development. I don't think anyone, including myself, really understands the significance of the economic development piece that will be the downtown. We will be a regional driver. And it's coupled with our amazing partnerships. To the West, we have an unbelievably beneficial and, and great relationship with the Federated Indians, the Great and Rancheria. And we've took on some of their branding. To the East, we have a great, great institution, Sonoma State University. And we're going to work with our partners. We're going to work with our partners so that we're stronger together and moving forward as a community. That's how we're going to do all of this. Finally, Councilmember Rodriguez mentioned infrastructure and beautification. And it amazes me that this little town did basically $2.5 million of beautification and street paving in the last year. That's incredible. And what's even more remarkable is we're going to start on the $3.7 million Southwest Boulevard Complete Streets program. That is long overdue, and that is something that has been on my radar since I first ran for office, giving that whole neighborhood an uplift, right? Making an investment in AMB sections and C-section, just all of the older sections in town is very important, right? When we were first seated several years ago, we wanted to make sure that everyone had a seat at the table, right? Everyone from all the different communities and faiths, just every aspect of Roanoke Park. Because let's face it, Roanoke Park is undergoing a renaissance right now, and a rising tide lifts all boats. And as your mayor and this council, we are committed to making sure that none of our community members are left behind. They're all valued. We are all valued. And together, we are that beautiful pageant that is Roanoke Park. So that's what we're going to keep focusing on. And I'll just kind of leave it there. And I'm grateful to all my council members. I'm grateful to the public and our fine staff. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.